Call the December fourteenth, special call, City Council meeting in order. You will please stand and join me in the invocation and pledge.
Let's gracious heavenly father, for your day, give him thanks for another day. Lord, we ask you to be with so many of us, our family members, friends, coworkers who've lost loved ones over the last several weeks and several days. Ask you to provide them strength and comfort during this trying time. I ask you to be with our family and friends if you're going into the holiday season and the new year and give this council the wisdom and the competency to make decisions that best benefit the city of Jackson. Ask all these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is roll call. Sandy, see all council members present. Item, it's not four, but item four is new business. It's consideration of a stadium license and use agreement for the city of Jackson baseball stadium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. The city opened proposals in August for the reuse, repurpose and operation of the West Tennessee baseball stadium. We advertised in the Wall Street Journal. We sent out twenty-three invitations. We sent out information for the ballpark digest, which is supposed to be the number one source for news within the business of baseball. We sent information to the Baseball America Street and Smith's Sports Business Journal and the Sports Events Magazine. We formed an evaluation committee comprised of Derek Stingley, Kirk Wallen, McKenzie and Adam Summerlin, Ginger Williams, James Kirkland, Mal Patel and Russ McKelvey, our city council member. You have a copy of the use agreement between the city and In The Beginning LLC, the only proposer for this project. Lisa and Dennis Bastian are here to answer any questions as well as our city attorney and our finance director.
May I do a prayer?
All right, we have a motion.
Ms., Ms. White.
Have a second, hold on, hold on. We have a second. Now we'll open up for questions.
Ms., Ms. White, can we talk about the process real quick?
Johnny.
So you said Wall Street Journal, that's, I thought the New York Times was the last one that I heard. Was it New York Times or?
It was the Wall Street Journal.
Wall Street Journal, okay. When I look through this list that you included in this packet, I'm assuming these are the direct sends that you had. Is that correct?
I sent those, yes.
And so just kind of going through here, you know, the downtown Winter Commons Ice Rink in Clarksville, the Branson Visitors Bureau, Neyland Stadium, Chesapeake, Virginia, City of Chesapeake, Virginia Parks and Recreation, a New York Attorney's Office specializing in workers' compensation, a semi-pro startup, the Buffalo Bills. I'm just curious, was there a plan on the market that we were trying to advertise to?
A lot of those people called us and wanted to see the specs. It could be that they were just interested in what we were doing here. We had some architects also that you might see on there that also wanted to know because they didn't know if we would be redesigning the stadium. So most of it was just people who were trying to find out what was going on in our city.
Okay. And so when I look at those publications that you brought up earlier, I have a difficult time finding where one might advertise for that. Could you explain where, in Baseball Digest or in Baseball America, where one might advertise and how they advertise for that?
I'll turn that over to our communications director, Kenny Cummings.
Okay.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Was not expecting to hear, but however, I received email from Ms. White asking to, of course, make the page for the baseball stadium. And I was given the task to communicate with the Baseball Digest. And what they did was they put it on their page on the right side of their homepage, the picture of the stadium and a link to everything needed to, for that process.
And so that was for Baseball Digest and Baseball America, that we ran an advertisement
Correct.
With them, okay, okay. Ms. White, really quickly, just so, I think it's important for the public to understand, you know, how we got to this point. When we look at, you know, there were some talks about some interference in this process and so on and so forth. And so, you know, one of my concerns throughout this is, did we, did we advertise to a suitable market to be able to get suitable responses back? And two, when we had the interference in the process, was there ever any discussion about rebooting the process back in August, September, October?
No.
Okay. I'd open it up to the other councils, I have some financial questions, but I'd open it up to other council members if they have any questions.
Councilman Taylor, would you elaborate a bit about what you're talking about, the stall or?
Yeah, what, from, from what has been.
Truly transparent.
Yes, from what has been told to me, and this is secondhand information, but it had been expressed to me that all the interested parties that are on this list were sent an email and they were all copied on the same email. And one of those interested parties potentially or allegedly sent potential litigation or letters of potential litigation to some of the interested parties.
As councilors discussing the meeting on Thursday, there was a threat of litigation from one of the respondents during the RFP process that if anyone responded to the RFP, then they would be, they would be subject to litigation. That's what the councilmen referring to.
So what effect did that have on the overall process?
A couple of leagues and interested parties said they weren't going to respond at the time because of the threat of litigation. And Prospect League didn't waiver on their threat of litigation, they continued on with the process.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Was that a legal process? Would they have legally been able to sue if they actually just entered and submitted to a RFP, please?
Question for attorney.
Well, being able to win, no.
Okay.
I don't have to be able to win in order to sue, as we're finding out more and more. And that's what the judge who was handling the pending litigation between us and the other party said. As a matter of fact, he was going to order an injunction not to do it again. And the other party said, I'm sorry, and I won't do it again. So it was a hollow threat. Everyone knew it was a hollow threat, but there are some people who go around threatening to sue whether they have a valid case or not. I think that's what happened.
Okay. That was my question. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing out on someone, but it sounds like if they were really interested, they would have gone ahead with the process. But that was, last part was my opinion. And I think to Mr. Taylor, if it's secondhand, I think it needs to be firsthand. I think we need to know all the facts. And if it's not really, if it's just hearsay, then I don't think we need to be going on hearsay. But I just want the facts.
Any more questions for?
Well, very quickly, then, then the question, Louis, is the litigation resolved or did they ever file anything again?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, they withdrew the threat within the context of the arbitration that was pending.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ms. White, have we, so understanding the timeline, after the RFP was closed, but, you know, we had some potential bidders that were worried. Once we got the past situation resolved with our former relationship, has there been interest from other entities?
No one else has contacted us.
Okay.
That would be contrary to what I've heard.
I don't think they've contacted the person department, they have contacted my office. And one wanted to circumvent the entire process and provide a bid outside of the RFP process.
Okay. In terms of, so at our last meeting, we talked, and I may have Mr. Arnold come up here, in our last meeting, you know, we were granted or presented this, the lease, the original lease agreement. And so I made the request when that lease hit our mailboxes, that we develop a pro forma. I think this should be standard procedure for the city in any situation where the city's going to expend significant dollars, that we should run a pro forma out. It's common business practice, just to understand the costs and revenues that we have. Mr. Arnold and myself have worked on this over, over the weekend, and I believe that was printed and put in your packets this morning. And I asked Mr. Arnold to come up and present that.
Good morning. As Councilman Taylor described, standard business practice and just a general good idea is when you're considering a proposal like this, a business proposal like this, is to prepare a pro forma. Just, just a kind of a friendly reminder, this is, you know, this is, this is not a budget. This is a pro forma based on our understanding of the proposal. And the numbers in this pro forma, there are bases for these numbers and assumptions surrounding these numbers. Most of those are actually footnoted on the document that I believe you received last evening or, or this, this morning sometime. It's, it's rather straightforward, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. I guess one kind of fundamental remark that I would offer to the council surrounding these, these numbers, you know, we've, we've had baseball in Jackson for, I guess, the last twenty years, up until the last couple of years due to the pandemic and the changes in, in Major League Baseball. So many, if not all, of the costs that you see in this pro forma would be costs that we have had, the city has incurred, you know, in the past. I don't really know that there's significant or material new cost reflected, you know, in this pro forma. Obviously, the revenues associated with the proposal that you're considering, considering this morning, you know, are new to the pro forma. The structure of the agreement that you're considering is quite different and quite clearer to understand and administer than what we've had in the past. And I guess the final comment that I might offer, you know, about the, about the pro forma, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions, would, would just simply be when you, when you think about this, you know, the city has, you know, a very, a very nice ballpark that serves this city well for, for, I guess, since nineteen ninety-eight, I guess. You know, some, some of the costs that's reflected in this pro forma is really kind of independent of the proposal that you're considering this morning. It's cost, it's fixed cost. And it's cost that we will likely incur and maintain, you know, utilities and maintenance of the ball field. You know, we want to, we want to maintain and improve the asset, you know, that the city owns. So much of the cost that you see in here that's kind of fixed in nature is really kind of independent of the proposal, I guess, that you're considering of this morning. You know, we've done some research, I've worked with the mayor, I've worked with Councilman Taylor. We've talked to some people who maybe know a little bit more about the costs related to operating the ballpark than we do, to get some basis for some of these numbers that we've inserted into this pro forma. And I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that anybody may have or touches.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold?
About the equipment, that we get that information.
The equipment that was going to be purchased, which, 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 which equipment we're talking about?
The equipment about the rest medium for the concession stand.
Now, we'll, we'll have to replace that equipment. The previous licensee did not accept our offer to purchase the equipment at the price. And so, I mean, it's, it's also independent of the, the proposal and the new license and use agreement because we'll have to replace it regardless of what tenant we have in there.
At our cost?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Cobb a question now?
Yeah, was there any more questions for Mr. Arnold before we move on, so we don't have?
Just so the council understands and for full transparency on the, kind of the buckets of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Arnold. So we have, as Mr. Arnold said, we have the operating expenses that, that historically it has taken, we've used those to build this model that you have in front of you, that it's taken to keep the ballpark and maintain the ballpark as it is today. Mr. Bastian and his proposal had outlined a number of items that he was willing to put in money to improve the stadium. Those have been now reflected in the agreement that you have in front of you. Those would be an investment on Mr. Bastian's part into the stadium. In addition to that, as you brought up, Councilman Dodd, we have the concessions equipment, and there's a litany of other equipment and repairs that the stadium would need to undergo in order to prepare itself for, you know, a quality product, whatever that may be, be it the Prospect League or any other, any other entity that would come in there and operate it. Those costs we don't yet understand. So we've, we, we, we know that we're going to have to figure those out, but that's coming down the pipe. But there is going to be some investment that the city will need to make into the, into the facilities. And so really, we're, right now, in terms of this, there's really not a material change outside of Mr. Bastian's license agreement and any naming rights, that, that small percentage of naming rights that the city would get that would go towards affecting the bottom line. Effectively, over the term that we're granted, or over the term that we're granting Mr. Bastian his initial term, the city would expend about five point six million dollars to, to keep and maintain the, the, the field and, and the, and the ballpark. So that, I think, is important for everybody to understand. So that's the cost just to operate, we're going to have additional costs to bring it back up to something that's suitable for someone to, to operate in. Did I characterize it?
But that cost will be, no matter what we do, we're going to do that cost regardless.
Well, yeah, I think, I think a lot of those items, if you look at, you know, field maintenance, utilities, those, those items are somewhat of a hard number that we're going to have to take on as far as salaries and benefits and the cleaning services, those are based off of, you know, a, a basis on the number of times we need to clean. And we've kind of built those numbers in. The other revenue projections that you see up there, hotel and local sales tax, we've built in a little local sales tax based off of the budget that Mr. Bastian put into his proposal. He had, he had some dollars in there that were taxable revenue. We took that and we applied the sales tax so we could see what the sales tax would be generated off of his revenues within the stadium. And then we made some assumptions based off of previous economic impact reports on the percentage of visitors that would come from outside of a fifty mile radius and the effect that they would have on the economy. And you can see those somewhat reflected in, and these are all assumptions, but reflected in that as well.
And I think you can look at, down at the bottom in the highlighted areas are the three years we had to go on. So remember the council FY nineteen, we didn't have a designated fund for the ballpark, it was pulled from different funds. That was our best effort to pull the funds and get a true number. FY twenty was the first year we actually did that, and that was five seventy-one, seven ninety-six with no season was the cost for that stadium. And then FY twenty-one was, you know, the partial season that we had, the, the gold eyes in the stadium for FY twenty-one. So just to kind of give you a reference on where those numbers came from, they just didn't pull the numbers out of the air, they, they referenced the numbers from previous years.
Effectively, with the, the way that this performance built, it doesn't matter how many games or how many nights of entertainment we have. If, you know, the generals had a seventy-two game or some odd home season, you know, Mr. Bastian's team would have a thirty to thirty-two, thirty-two game season, it, the cost is the same for the city, no matter how much is happening. That, that referencing back to my questions to Ms., Ms. White is, you know, we're going to spend five point six million dollars, how many events, how much can we get out of that five point six million dollars? I think that's the mindset, that's the mindset that I have, and I hope you can share that, is how do we get the most bang for a buck?
As far as investment, how much investment are they making?
It's, you go into the license agreement, it's, it's highlighted in red, Councilman Dodd, on page, page six. And so those are, those are ranges of investment. So my calculation was initial investment of hundred and some odd, hundred and forty thousand, I think, was what we looked at.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. As far as, you know, being in this current fiscal year, do you have an idea of what we've already spent on ballpark maintenance and what we have left in that bucket?
This fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
If I, if I remember correctly, the, the budget for this fiscal year was in the hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. We have spent some funds in routine kind of operational maintenance issues this year. The last number that I, if I'm, I think I'm pretty, pretty close on this was, seemed like it was somewhere in the twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar range so far this year. So I, I think there's, could, could be a hundred thousand dollars left in that budget this year.
Starting this week, our, our maintenance department is going through and starting to assess the stadium on what needs to be done to, to bring it up to par and what they can do in, in the materials. So we'll see some cost increase over the next weeks and months.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like we're muddying the waters just a little bit. I want to make sure that the public understands what we're already obligated to spend, what we have to do to maintain our facility and what we're going to spend in addition if the Baskins come. So it, it sounds like we've gone in a lot of different directions. Can we just have a, just one statement for the public to understand how much, you said a hundred and eighty thousand times eight, that's approximately, I was getting my calculator out, but can you just say a statement so the public will understand what we would already be spending for our maintenance, what we already have to take care of, because it's our home.
Sure, I'll do, I'll do my best. So first off, we've put an escalator, an increase in cost of about three percent per year on most of these expenses, you know, beyond year one, right? So that, that's part of the number that Councilman Taylor has, has referenced. The city, the city currently has, I blew them correct in this, two full-time employees that are employees of, of, of the ballpark that are kind of, it's here already. You know, obviously, we would want to keep the utilities on at the ballpark for, for obvious reasons. Utilities would be a type of expense that, that could be variable in nature, depending again on how many nights the stadium might be utilized. Cleaning of the facility, there, there are some fixed, there's a fixed cost component to that, but there's also, you know, can be a variable component of that, again, again, depending on how many nights the, the stadium may be used. Certainly, it's a baseball stadium, right? So it, we, we can't let the field deteriorate if we ever want to play baseball out. So you have to maintain the field. So I would suggest that's, that, that's a fixed cost that, that we're going to have already. As has been described by the mayor and other members, certain members of the council, you know, we, just like any city asset, there's, there's capital investment in that asset that, that would need to be made to, to, to maintain the facility so it's available to be used for whatever purpose we decide, whenever we decide to use it. So just, just to summarize all of that, essentially, it's, going back to my opening comments, you know, I would suggest to you that most of this cost that's in this pro forma has, has been in our cost structure in the past and would continue to be in our cost structure moving forward, assuming that we want to maintain and improve that asset such that it can serve the community. So those variable components that I described may be relating to the number of events or at the ballpark, whether it's utilities or cleaning of the stadium, those are kind of variable expenses, they're, they're the smaller component of this number that, that would be kind of be driven by how many events are there. I hope that helps.
Just wanted to be clear. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for Mr. Arnold or Mr. Cummings? If not, we can let them step away and we can ask Mr. Bastian, Mr. and Ms. Bastian to come up, and then Ms. White as well. Any more questions for those three?
I have a quick question for Mr. Arnold, if I may. In the pro, pro forma, there are no advertising or marketing expenses. Are those going to be borne by the Bastian?
That would be correct.
Okay, he can speak to that when he comes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any question for those three? And if you, if you have a question later, we can call them back up, but I want to give some room for Mr. and Ms. Bastian to come up. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
For the moment. Then we'll ask Mr. and Ms. Bastian to come up and talk about their product and what they plan to do, and if you have any questions for them.
This feels like a congressional hearing or something.
We try our best, we try our best.
We're proud to be here. We are humbled, we are honored, we're proud, we're privileged and we are blessed to be here. We know Jackson pretty much inside out now in the surrounding areas and have gotten to know it very, very well. So we're here to answer questions. The, I also want to thank Mr. Louis Cobb and everybody else, the mayor and everybody else that's been involved with the back and forth. It's been a, I'm sure he wants to get this off his plate and away from his desk, but again, we're here to answer any questions. We have a full agreement on the lease agreement, that use agreement, I believe that you probably have in front of you. We did some minor modifications last night while we were setting in an Arby's in Sykes to Missouri. So, you know, it's, it's on the run, but this is what we're, this is what we do, and we're proud of that. And this is what we've done, I've done it for forty-five years, my wife has done it for thirty-eight, and I've been blessed to have her by my side. And we, we look forward to being a contributing member to the burgeoning and growth of Jackson. You know, we fully recognize the incoming companies that are coming here that hopefully will share in what we're doing. So we're here to answer questions and do whatever we need to do. So fire away.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. and Ms. Bastian, thank you for being here today and enjoyed getting to know you briefly in our short time together. One question I have and that I've heard from the community as well, in terms of baseball, obviously, it's a baseball park and that's your expertise and that's been made clear and, and honestly, personally don't have any concerns over baseball and how that plays out. Looks like you guys have done a great job with the Prospect League and, and that's pretty clear cut. I think my question or concern may be, can you lay out for us potentially what the rest of the year, the eleven months, ten months out of the, the year, what that would look like in terms of events, entertainment, kind of your ideas? Because I think that's a lot of what the community, we do have some baseball fans, but there's also a lot of interest in what else happens with the facility.
Please understand that twenty twenty-two is going to be just a kind of grab on what we can do. It's late. Events are typically booked almost a year in advance, so we will do what we can do for twenty twenty-two. One of the things that we will do, I'll be going to Chicago for five days in early January, it's the National American Baseball Coaches Association Convention. We will try to meet with several of the coaches of this region and maybe have them book a games in the spring of twenty twenty-three. It's too late for twenty twenty-two. University of Tennessee, Memphis, Murray State in this region, obviously the locals, the, you know, union, UT Martin, et cetera, et cetera, about playing games there. We want games there. It helps us sell, you know, outfield signage. We want more than just the Prospect League games. Also too, and this sounds a little bit odd, we look at that facility as not just a ballpark, but as hopefully an entertainment destination, a destination station. We've been educated pretty heavily on the state licensing laws on drones, and I can see people sitting in the stands, you know, having drone racings around the light towers and having the championship results all done on the video board. So drone racing is something I think that's coming to this region. We are somewhat familiar with the new electric scooter phenomenon that started on the west coast and sweeping here. You've got a massive parking lot, it can feeds right down into the West Tennessee healthcare complex parking lot. You can do electric scooter racing. Our son's got one that goes sixty-five mile an hour. I'm talking about one of those you stand on with the, you know, the post there, it's just, it's coming this way. We look at the possibility of having possibly the, like the Kevin Garnett three-on-three hoop it up tournaments. There's two level areas in that parking lot, I think that can be done on weekends. There's two level areas in that parking lot. I think that can be done on weekends. You know, we'd like to have weddings there, potentially proms. We'd like to look at any other type of events that might come to us that we're not even thinking of. We want people to be able to call and say, hey, we'd like to book a flea market up there in the concourse. Absolutely. Why would we not? So, you know, again, anything and everything that's potentially possible there, we would like to start a JJ FFL. And that's the Jackson Just For Fun Football League for kids, say ages five up to twelve, that aren't in organized football. Just want to go play for fun. They aren't wearing pads on a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday afternoon. Lay out two small football fields out there. So we want our staff and ourselves involved on a daily basis in the community. We will also be involved with the community. We'll be at any event, you know, with a booth, with a parade, et cetera, et cetera. That's something we do that we've always done. As far as events, I mean, you name it, if it's doable out there, we would, down the road, investigate the possibility maybe even of some soccer. The field, the way it's laid out now, you cannot put a full-size soccer field on it. You can do a slightly reduced field. Obviously, you're talking the wear and tear. You can't have soccer and baseball on that every single day. And I'm sure some gentlemen sitting in the back of the room are already rolling their eyes, thinking about soccer across that outfield. So gotten to know Brian and Jake very well so far and, yeah, again, you name the event, we want to have it.
You know, in the past-
And concerts.
Okay, well, that's what I was going to ask. I know in the past, we've had, you know, concerts, Nelly, Willie Nelson, potentially Snoop Dogg. Like are those types of music events that you would be open to or opposed to?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And kind of, okay.
We have one of our ballparks in our league in Springfield, Illinois, similar-sized ballpark, similar ballpark. Last year, they had The Beach Boys, they had Mercy Me, they had a Beatles, what do you call it?
Cover.
Cover band. So no, concerts is something that obviously we would like to do. Obviously, you can't have one every weekend. But so we, concerts, obviously, it is a great venue for concerts. Obviously, the wear and tear on the field has to be considered the way it's laid out. You know, and I trust the, the staff that would be doing that and ourselves too. So absolutely. I didn't mention concerts because I knew you were going to ask.
Councilman Brooks, any question?
Yeah, very quickly, to the question that I asked, Mr. Arnold, could you speak to the advertising and marketing budget that you would, would have year to year?
Well, we, we do all of that in-house. If you're talking about what we will spend out in the area or what the dollars we'll try to bring in, give you an example, kind of got our eyes open last week. You know, we'll, you know, the beautiful Union University giant outfield billboard there, they're gone. They've all, all the outfield signage has been removed. All of the signage has been removed. So we're starting from scratch there. We can't renew that. We can, but then we have to start all over again. So from an advertising and marketing budget, we're going to have to replace every single sign there and that's on us. We, that is part of the package that we present when we're talking to national and local sponsors. So again, that's, that's our responsibility. That's, we'll pay for all that.
Sure. As far as some concrete numbers, what, what are your projections that you would spend in advertising and marketing?
I think in our RFP.
I'm sorry, are you asking what we would spend on advertising?
Well, typically, a lot of that is done by trade in honesty with radio stations and tabloids. A lot of that nowadays, and I have to admit, I'm a little bit of a old school, but the new school is social media. So we'll be buying several social media sites and doing a lot of advertising and marketing that way. And that's a little bit different realm. We'll have a person who will, that's all they'll do, the social media director.
So you will have a, that, that would be a person for, from your team or on your side of the fence?
We look to have the five to six-person staff. We will have a person who'll be a social media director. I'll be calling on a lot of the, you know, bigger accounts myself. We'll have a general manager. We'll have an assistant general manager. We'll have somebody in sales. Staff at a ballpark is kind of like, y'all do the same thing. So it's not like they're specified. Once the game starts, we're pulling the tarps, we're doing all that. But again, we will be out selling, marketing both old-school methods and old, and new-school methods, calling on businesses within a thirty, forty-mile radius as well as doing our social media and advertising. So.
So for instance, some of the other ballparks that you work with, can you give us an idea of how much you spend in advertising and marketing there?
Well, again, I-
Maybe even a percentage of the total budget?
That frankly was a few years ago. So we usually probably generate in both trade and cash. What, what's a fair number?
In advertising expense, honestly, we, I, I can't tell you that we've made a budget for advertising expense. I mean, part of that is going to be, you know, sometimes you don't have to spend advertising dollars because you have those feet on the ground. So I, I would not be, I can't come up with a figure for-
It would probably be close to six figures.
Unless you're talking about our expense in that signage. So I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Not, not necessarily the signage, but just advertising and marketing altogether. We, we see how important that's going to be in the position that we're in now.
With the investment we're making, we're obviously not going to, not going to not do it right.
Sure.
So, but to answer that question, I don't know exactly. You know, again, because radio stations, even newspapers sometime, doing a lot of trading and change for tickets and also display advertising and social media. So that has changed a little bit over the years.
And currently, that's not a line item?
No, sir.
In anything that you-
No, sir. It's kind of based on what our revenue is also. What we take in, then we turn it on and spend back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You presented, in your proposal, you presented a budget, a rough budget of this. And just to quote from the proposal, there was a marketing line item of a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty next year and a hundred thousand following that.
Okay, now that was in the RFP, which obviously is confidential information as far as the, the financing. But no, that would be accurate when I said around six figures.
Okay.
But I think part of that marketing, those numbers, and maybe I wasn't thinking that direction, is one of the things that we plan to do is we'll have a vehicle with a, a wrap that is going to, and, and including the person that is involved in that. That is going to be a person that will be in this Jackson baseball vehicle that will be visible around town. So that would be part of that expense. And so I wasn't necessarily, I was thinking advertising.
No, that, that's answered my question.
No, we, we, to elaborate on what she mentioned was, we'll either get an SUV or a van. We'll put a logo on it and wrap it. City of Jackson logo on it. We want to display that too. We're very proud of that relationship. But we want to go around to businesses and interview them, interview the car dealer and say, you know, what do you think about Jackson baseball? Put that up on our social media, on Instagram, on Facebook, et cetera, et cetera, and all the talks and the tics and all that kind of stuff that are new to me. But we want those people interviewed. We want constant, constant stuff going out to the public.
And Mr. Taylor, in that figure would also be some of our initial expenses in print materials that we would need for making those sales calls.
The naming.
Yes, yes. So I wasn't, I wasn't considering like advertise, advertising marketing, but that would be in that.
And we'll have brochures and marketing materials, et cetera, et cetera, that we will sell from.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm going to go back to my original question. And I, I have a couple. So one is, can we express for the community what the difference this is from the teams we've had in the past?
Good question. Be glad to elaborate that on that because I've been in both realms.
Thank you.
We both have. You had minor league baseball. Actually, I just finished the book on the history of Jackson baseball, going back to eighteen ninety-three. You had independent baseball all the way up until nineteen ninety-eight. And that was where you pretty much had local players from this region, playing in the Kitty League, in the Three-I League and other leagues. And, and you played in about five different ballparks over the years. But in nineteen ninety-eight, we are very familiar, as I explained, that Mayor Charles Farmer came to us and said, hey, you just bought a homeless double-A team. Would you want to come here? Well, we would have been here the rest of our lives if that not happened, if there had been a ballpark plan in place. We had the Charlotte double-A team after they elevated to triple-A. What you had in the west Tennessee Diamond Jacks was when David Hirsch moved the Memphis team here because Memphis went up to triple-A when the Marlins and the Rockies expanded. So you had a double-A team. In the realm of minor league baseball then and up until last year, there were seven levels of minor league baseball. There was rookie ball, there was advanced rookie, there was low-A, high-A, double-A, triple-A and the big leagues. A player did not necessarily have to step foot on each level. So you had a double-A level, which is a lot of prospects there. But again, those guys have played for two or three years or four years, sometimes, sometimes five. And by that time, somewhat, they're disgruntled. Sometimes they're kind of burnt out. Sometimes they are, you know, they're on their last legs. They don't know if they want to be there. They don't want to get involved with the community. They don't want to go to clinics and camps and be a part of that. The Prospect League and the advent of summer collegiate baseball, which is exploding, forty-two teams were contracted last year by Major League Baseball. Forty-one have already joined summer collegiate leagues or independent leagues already. That is the proliferation of those cities that lost it. In every single case, except a couple, I believe, their attendance did not go down at all. In our league, we took in Clinton, Iowa and Burlington, Iowa. Their attendance average went higher than they were when they were minor league baseball. They were contracted cities also. So what you have is, under the Prospect League, we work under the auspices of the NCAA. We have college All-Americans, we have college stars, we have college all-conference players. We're allowed to have four players from any one summer, un, one, excuse me, NCAA institution on one summer team. That's NCAA law. In other words, we can have four players from University of Tennessee. We can have four players from Union University. We can have four from UT and Martin. We have four from Memphis. We can have four from the other schools. Same way around our league, same way around the country. We have several hundred players that have played in this league that have made the big leagues. The number one pick of the New York Yankees this year, the twenty-first overall pick in the draft, was our shortstop in Lafayette, Indiana. So we are held in high renown. So we will have a manager, we will hire a manager, we'll hire a coach, a pitching coach and another coach. And then we were responsible, along with they, obtaining our roster. We'll have a thirty-two-man roster as opposed to twenty-five when you had minor league baseball. We will have, you know, several sets of branded uniforms, team equipment, et cetera, et cetera. But the players at this level are told by their college coach, you're going to go out in the community. You're going to be a part of that. They want to do that still. Mr. Cisco can attest to that. His grandson played in this league. That was an omen last week, by the way. So he played in Danville, Illinois. We have sixteen teams that we are growing. Right now, I am personally working with three or four other cities about expanding. We televise every game nationally. Now, is that going to cause General Electric to move a plant here? I don't know, but they're always looking for things for their employees to do and that will be exposure. We will commit right now on our television broadcast, which is PLTV. That's Prospect League Television, that we will offer two to four or five commercials promoting the city of Jackson, if you want to put together a video. We want to do that because that goes out around the country. So as far as the difference, you're going to see twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three-year-old college players that are playing in the summertime. And what they're doing is they're getting ready for the next level. The coach will assign four players. His grandson plays at Arkansas State. The head coach at Arkansas State was our first baseman in Charleston, West Virginia in nineteen ninety-one. We know him well. Basically, it comes down to the relationship that the operator or that head, that field manager has with college coaches around America. The lady who operates the team in Danville, Illinois, she gets four players every year from LSU. She gets four from Ole Miss. We will have players from all around the country. We have two teams who, some of their ownership are on the west coast. They have players from USC, UCLA, Arizona State, Long Beach, you know, cities like that. So you're going to see a well-represented and we will concentrate on SEC because of the relationship here with the SEC, of bringing in four players from those schools. Typically, it is the job of the pitching coach or the assistant coach to assign players for summer baseball. They will live here for two and a half months. They will live with adopted families, which we've already reached out to a person here that would love to be the kind of head adopted family director. So it's, it's a great relationship. It's a unique relationship. We have families that have had players in their home for two months every summer for the last thirty and forty years. And they swear by that, the relationship they have with those kids down the years and the Christmas cards and the, and the ones that make the big leagues, you know, they go see them. So it's neat. Now, the other difference too between us and minor league baseball is by the time a kid got to be, I say kid, by the time a young player got to be a double-A player, pretty much mom and dad have seen most of his games. Here, you're going to have grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, buddies, girlfriends, all coming in, you know, for the games. And it's a little bit different. It's a bit, a little bit different. Another thing I might add that we're doing right now, in fact, I had a long conversation on our drive last night and I'd already met with these people on several occasions. There's a national tournament company called Play Nine. Play Nine is somewhat like Perfect Game and some of the others. And they have a contract with forty-some teams that are nationwide that are willing to come in and play two tournaments here, not, not competing with the west Tennessee, you know, healthcare complex, but doing in addition to because these are the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds that play on full-size fields. So we would utilize, hopefully, and we will talk to them, Union University, Jackson State Community College, Trinity, you know, some of the other high school fields because they might need eight fields for three weekends. I mean, for three days of a weekend. So, you know, we, they have committed to do two of those, one in July and one in late fall, maybe more. So that's that much more revenue and economic impact. And that's just some of the things we will do. Obviously, those games will also be played at the ballpark.
There was another part to that question. So the community of Jackson Madison County can know how you all are committed. Would you express the monetary funds that you've already committed in anticipating coming here to Jackson? And then can you also let us know what have you done and what will you be doing to become a part of Jackson and Madison County's community?
Thanks.
Can I start on that? Okay. I'm going to start on that part. So part of our commitment, of course, would be, you know, purchasing the team. And, but our biggest commitment is this one year that we have where we really don't know exactly what that entertainment plan is going to be. But that does give us a chance to really start laying some groundwork and really start investing in the community personally. So one of the things for us is we are looking for a home or apartment. We're finding it difficult finding a home, as you all well know, which that's a, a very, it's a blessing here. So we might have to settle on an apartment and then, and look, look for a home. That will be our second home because we will keep our home in southern Illinois. But we know how very important it is for us to be grounded in this community. The other thing is, we do have to get to know the community. We expect to have a staff this year. It won't be the full staff that we'll have for twenty twenty-three, but we are going to have to pay some people with possibly no income coming in. So that first year for us is going to be a year of investment with, where we're not quite sure what that return is going to be. You know, once we move into those following years, we know that eventually that's going to come. But this first year, we'll also have those expenses, again, the printing, where we're laying that groundwork with no assured revenue. But, and another thing for us is just to be here and to be available to reach out to anybody who, who, you know, give us your ideas. Let us come speak. We're, we're glad to go to your luncheon or go to a school. And that's just going to give us time. So in, in a way, it's, it's a little frightening to think we have a year with expenses and no revenue, but it's also a blessing because we do want to do it right and we want to get to know this community and be able to listen and not be under this gun that, you know, we're, all eyes are focused on opening day, where all eyes are focused on opening day, but we've got some time to do that. So we've got some considerable expenses upfront.
Let me elaborate on that too, is that we will be here and I enjoy speaking to the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Civitans, the Moose, the Elk, the, all the civic clubs, the church groups, the men's organizations, the ladies organizations, you know, daily at noon for their luncheons and things. So we will get the word out. We'll be a part of that. I want to give you an example. The closest city to us as of we speak in the league is Cape Girardeau, Missouri, which is a shade under two-hour drive. They had their press conference and announcement in January of two thousand eighteen for the two thousand nineteen season. We advocate, when I'm making presence, presentations to other cities about joining the league, we advocate a minimum of fifteen to sixteen months in advance of opening day to be ready to market and sell, promote, get the name out and become part of that community. We, we push that and people understand that. I mean, baseball, once the season starts, you've already done all the work. You've already laid the ground. You have, every night's a promotion, every night's a gimmick, from the fireworks to the cap night, T-shirt night, et cetera, et cetera. That's all done almost a year in advance. So, you know, we welcome the opportunity to have some time. And in the meantime, we'll book things as they come along and as we can pick up. So becoming a part of the community is something we pride ourselves in and we've always done. So, becoming a part of the community is something we pride ourselves in and we've always done. I think you can call any city we've operated minor league teams in, Charleston, West Virginia was the last one, and the relationship we had with people there is phenomenal, we still are in contact with them. I think in the back of what I gave you the other day, there's three or four letters of recommendation. I didn't ask them to write them. When they heard we were working on this, they offered. So, you know, we, we're proud to be here, and we will make this part of our lives and make you folks what we do.
Thank you all, thanks, and thanks for being here.
You have a question? Somebody had a question. After the air. Your Jim?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me-
I'll call for the question.
Somebody else asked my question, so.
I'll call for the question.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, Ms. Nunnery is here, would it be okay if she could express the value that it would bring to the tourism and the tax dollars a little bit? I think she's prepared for that, if it's okay.
Yeah, she's prepared for it. There's been a call for questions, so we need to have a motion on, is a motion on that as a second for that, first?
So, so everyone understands, that's calling for the vote.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nunnery.
All right, then a call for questions, further discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further business coming for the council? We adjourn.